Hello, everyone. Welcome to the board professional development session for this year's MSBA Fall General Meeting, the Fall General Meeting of 2020. It is my pleasure to welcome you to this session today, which will focus on the State of Equity in Education Report, which was released earlier this year. The report focuses on greater equity and diversity in Winnipeg's education system. And the Manitoba School Boards Association identified quickly that there is opportunity here for all boards in the province to learn more about the report. And that's why we made this the focus of our PD session for this Fall General Meeting. In this pre-recorded session, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jerome Cranston, Professor and Dean in the Faculty of Education at the University of Regina. Darren Gugu, Chair of the CEA Edcan Network, Director of Education for Member Two Mi'kmaq First Nation, and former Chair of the Cape Breton Victoria Regional School Board. And Tom Gensel, Retired National School Board Association Executive Director. He served in that role from 2012 to 2020. Their moderator today will be Dr. Rob Santos, former Director of the Provincial Healthy Child Office here in Manitoba, as well as a former Assistant Deputy Minister for K-12 Education. With that, I'll turn it over to the session. Please enjoy.
So I'm Rob Santos. The Manitoba School Boards Association has invited me to facilitate these conversations with the community about the all-important topic of representation on school boards. And so we're really pleased to have your generosity and your time for the next 30 minutes or so. We'd really love to tap your experience and expertise as an educational leader to speak to this issue. And as I think you're aware, we were hoping you could kind of give us perspectives at different levels, that those multi-level influences from the macro of society all the way to the micro of the classroom.
Pleasure to be here.
Well, thanks for having me. Let me say Tansay, Tansay, Bonjour, hello to my colleagues in Manitoba. And I really do appreciate Manitoba School Boards Association reaching out to me.
Really, I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to our conversation, Rob.
So starting at that societal or educational system level, thinking very big picture. In your experience, what is the single largest barrier to individuals from marginalized communities being represented in school divisions?
I think in terms of one of the biggest obstacles in terms of having, you know, racialized and minoritized people represented on school boards is that sense of belonging. You know, we live in a society in Canada and in Manitoba, how a deep roots in terms of racism being used as a mechanism and means to keep people out, you know, out of communities, out of society, out of certain professions. And I think that, you know, the strong forces that have existed for centuries, where people don't feel like they belong, that their voice is actually valued, that there is a space for them to contribute. It's probably one of the biggest socio-historical factors that works against what school boards hope to do, which is to have, you know, a diversity of voices, perspective, you know, across the spectrum from Manitoba to sit at tables and help contribute to decisions that are made.
But I think it's true everywhere. There's great value to just that alone. There is this real tribalism that we're dealing with right now. And I think the more we can do to have those shared experiences, to learn more about each other, is really quite important. And in many ways, I think this is really driven by community conversations. This is really something that communities need to own. They need to not only say it's important to have great schools in our community, which of course I think it's true everywhere, but that we take a look at the students who are in those schools because they come to our schools with a variety of needs. Some better prepared to enter public education than others. And really, we need to be attentive to the individual needs of all students and how the public schools can address them. And so when we talk about voice and we talk about equity in public education, in my mind, at its core, it really comes down to that. What are we doing to try to make sure that we're really serious about helping all students to be successful? Regardless of, you know, where they started and the issues they may have as they enter the school system, what supports can we provide to help them do this stuff?
Can you say a bit more about those mechanisms about enabling voice and equity to really take hold and to really be sort of exemplified? What influence do you feel a school board can provide to ensure that the demographics, the cultural makeup of their communities are accurately reflected? Recognizing too, that in each jurisdiction, there are likely parameters, even limitations, legislative and otherwise in this context. What are your thoughts on that?
In Nova Scotia, we had since 2000 and since 1997, we have had appointed school board members. So as a First Nations Mi'kmaq individual, I was not elected to this position. I was chosen by the chiefs of three of this of the communities within the catchment area of the Cape Breton Victoria Regional School Board. And it reflected the nation-to-nation relationship that existed between the Mi'kmaq and the provincial government here. So I think that that set the stage for us in our own First Nations community to ask ourselves some fundamental questions such as, who do we want to represent us? What experiences should they have? And how can they best advocate? And how can we communicate with them when we need advocacy at the school board level? I'm also an individual who is not afraid to speak up. And so I think that that's, those are things that we have to look for. When we, when we're asked to have people represent us at the school board levels in the provincial circles, I think it's important that we have the right individuals, people with the knowledge, the background, the skill set to communicate. All of those things are extremely important. I think that one of the most important things about having a voice is knowing how to use it and knowing where to get the information so that you can be an effective voice. One of the things that we do, we did here in Nova Scotia, when I was on the school board, was have regular contact with the chiefs of those three communities. So whenever there was an issue that was affecting any of them, either my home community of Member Two or our sister communities of Wampanoag or Eska's Oni, we're able to have that open dialogue with that community. So when they had a concern, they knew they could simply pick up the phone, call me, and I would be able to voice that concern at the school board level. I think it was important to also remember as an Aboriginal trustee, as a Mi'kmaq trustee, it was really important to remember that I'm not there only for, to provide a perspective that is Mi'kmaq. I'm also there as a full-fledged school board member in, you know, at large as well. And so I know during the times when we talked about budget and when we talked about you know, school composition and we need schools, especially around the fiscal, the fiscal discussions that we were having. Because allocating those resources directly affects all of those students. And all of those students include our students as First Nations. So I think that, you know, having that and understanding that is really important. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that when you're on the school board as an Aboriginal voice or as a First Nations voice, it's important that you understand your own community, that you have connections into it, that you have the ability to go and speak to your elders and your leadership in those communities so that they can provide you with a direction. You're going out there, you're not going out there as yourself. You're not going out there as, I'm not going out and representing the Mi'kmaq as Darren Gugu. I'm going out there representing the Mi'kmaq nation from the perspective of our community, our elders, our chiefs and our political, our, you know, our politicians as well. So, and our parents.
Yeah, exactly. And it strikes me listening to you that as with that greater sense of responsibility, as you just described it, all the more important, the, all the more important, those relationships that you just described to establish and nurture, to enable representation to be as informed and as representative as possible.
How we identify those groups and how we engage them obviously will vary a little bit from place to place. It's easy sometimes to find a spokesperson for one of those groups and then kind of rely on their input. That can be dangerous because that person may or may not actually represent the interest. And secondly, I think we also have to acknowledge that when we're leading a school system, where we recognize that it's important to not only get information out about what the schools are doing, but to really hear what people are saying. We may not always like what they're saying, by the way. These can be some really, you know, harsh conversations sometime, but if we're serious about leadership in a context, especially like this, we really have to be prepared to really listen. Look, I think boards have extraordinary power in this process. First of all, just by their leadership role, their elected leadership role, but also through the power of the purse. Most school boards have authority to adopt budgets. And budgets say a whole lot about a community's priorities. I mean, if we're really serious about equity, for example, let me just offer this, Rob, as one example. In a community or city, let's say, or some, some area that's served by a school system, there may be a portion of the district that's higher income than others, or some schools that are struggling more than others. If we're really serious about equity, there's going to be an intentional reallocation of resources from some schools to others. That's very difficult. But if we're serious about the work, we have to be serious about making those kinds of things.
I think it ends up being, you know, typically what we say, which is, you know, both a top-down and a bottom, bottom-up type approach that we need to take. So, you know, as you point out, rightfully so, you know, there are legislative and regulatory restrictions in terms of, you know, elections and how we organize elections. And I think there is work to be done to take a look at whether or not some of those rules, procedures continue to disadvantage certain segments of their community. You know, again, borrowing from other jurisdictions, you know, how do you get nominated? How do you get people to support you as you go through the process? You know, are there places for some appointed trustees in combination with elected trustees? So I think at the other end, you know, being able to spend time in communities that quite often don't get invited to, you know, the proverbial board table to talk, you know, using sort of a very old-school model, but one that works well, I think, in particular with school boards who represent local voices, is to use, you know, town hall, community gatherings. You know, from a political point of view, it's old-school caucusing. You know, we used to have these caucuses where you would meet with, you know, with groups of people. And in one sense, we vilified them because now we call them special interest groups as if special interest groups themselves are inherently bad. But sometimes there are special interest groups who actually have just a few key concerns that they really want to know have surfaced at the table. And I think for trustees to recognize that you are the voice, you know, you're the only opportunity sometimes for people to have what matters to them represented at the board table. And so, you know, making and taking opportunities to hold things like town hall. And I think, you know, one of the things that COB has given us is an opportunity is to hold town halls virtually in our Faculty of Education. We've been holding a lot of town halls that people otherwise wouldn't be able to get to because of the geographic location. And it also provides a bit of a safe space for some people to be able to surface and have conversations that have had before. So I think it's, you know, working at both ends of the spectrum. And I think for trustees, listen carefully, you know, listening carefully to, again, what people in communities want represented at the table. And I think trustees are well-positioned. In some ways, I think they're better positioned than some of the provincial elected officials because local trustees do represent relatively small geographic areas, smaller communities. And I think, you know, again, breaking it down to smaller town hall, coffee shop type meetings where you go and spend time and listen to what matters to a local segment of your community matters a lot.
Do you have some things that were most memorable to you where there were, there were greater successes? I imagine this is a very common and a very human struggle, but it's one that just seems to be even more important at this moment in history than even before.
You also can't necessarily talk to all the groups in the community about every issue. But part of this is having a meaningful engagement. So I think it can happen in a couple of ways. One is that there are processes in place, not just by the board, but by the school system sort of writ large, to engage people in a variety of ways, not just sending out a newsletter, but really finding them where they are and engaging them. And then to the extent we can, and we have a lot of work to do here, to try to help make sure as best we can that school boards kind of look like the community. Because in many cases, they don't. The leadership is good leadership, it doesn't say anything about them. But people, I think, need to look at the leadership of their schools and feel like their perspective is represented somehow. You know, that you want people to feel like the people making the decisions have some, not only empathy for where they are, but some real understanding about it. And so I think that's, that's critically important here in terms of just figuring out ways that there can be engagement, sort of when people are looking and when they're not, that there are ways that we are having these conversations formally and informally. And there's a real sense of trying to be responsive to how people are viewing the issues that are coming up in front of the school board.
So you've had experience at so many different levels of the education system. Can you say a bit more, sort of from your perspective as an administrator in both the K-12 education system from, you know, your days as a principal, for example, all the way now to the Dean of Education at the University of Regina? Those are quite unique vantage points from both direct administration of the direct education of children, all the way to the training of our future, you know, educators. How does that belonging play out in those spheres from your, from your experience?
You know, one of the things that I'll also note is I learned a lot from my partner in life who spent three years as an elected trustee here in Saskatchewan. And I learned a lot about school boards and the hard work that school boards do. And then again, an attempt to understand and gain perspectives of folks who typically don't get heard in faculties of education. It matters that, that the faculty members, you know, reflect and represent the student body in schools. It matters that administrators reflect diversity of school communities. Same at Central Office. And importantly, and I think most importantly at the school board level, you know, the school board are representatives from the community. They carry the hopes and the aspirations of community members. And if, you know, you're a racialized person and you don't see people sitting around the table who have the same life experience, who face the same sorts of struggles and challenges, you do start to wonder whether or not those things are being surfaced at those more, those meetings. So at every single level, it matters. On a dean of education, there are 53 faculties of education in Canada, English Language faculties of education, and I'm one of three racialized people in the country. It's disproportionately low. And so there's work to do, you know, to represent, to do the work and to recognize that diversity matters. It matters a lot.
So are you aware either from other sister provinces or territories or other fellow school divisions or districts that do engage in an election process for trustees? Have there been any successful mechanisms when a school board finds itself to be not as diverse or as representative as it would like, but still desires to engage and express and enact the voices of that broader community?
Yeah, well, school boards were eliminated here in 2018. However, at that time, there was, there were, there were two unique members of our school boards. Every single, there were eight school boards in Nova Scotia. And each one of those school boards had an Aboriginal trustee or a Mi'kmaq trustee. And each one of them had an African Nova Scotian trustee. They were, they both used a very different process to select individuals. The Mi'kmaq, by, by, by way of the nation-to-nation relationship that existed here prior to contact and has, has evolved so that the nation-to-nation relationship is between the province and, and, and the Mi'kmaq. The way of honoring that, that process was to have the school board members be appointed. That didn't mean that we didn't have a democratic process. It's just a different type of democratic process. But I think it's important to remember that when the, when I'm appointed, I go through a different process. I go, my appointment has to pass through three chiefs and councils. And the chiefs of those communities have to agree in a consensus basis, on a consensus basis, that I will be their representative. In the case of our Mi'kmaq representative here in Nova Scotia, it was by reaching out to the local communities or local First Nations communities that were under the catchment area. And they, as a community, had to go through their process, whatever it may be, and democratically choose someone to be their representative on the council or on the school board. And for the African Nova Scotian community, they, they had a process set up so that the electorate, those people who, people in the Black community had an opportunity to vote for someone who they felt represented their, their needs. So if you were a African Nova Scotian, or if you were a parent of an African Nova Scotian, or if you were a grandparent of an African Nova Scotian in the public school system, you were able to vote in that election for that individual. So, you know, if you, if you, if you have a true desire to, if you have a true desire to be diverse and representative, you have to be willing to look outside the box and say, how can we best find a way forward, a mechanism to ensure that that voice, which we deemed important, is at the table with us all of the time?
Students and families of, well, fill in the blank, in any particular group. And you have a sense maybe of what their needs are, or at least you think you do, or maybe you've talked to some people who purport to represent those groups. But, you know, this goes to this no-one general public. Well, there's often not always just one subgroup either. There are multiple. And, and so that comes to, that really requires a deep understanding of the community and what's driving it. And I think that's, again, a key part of the work. So I just really wanted to make sure I included that.
So what's your current thinking on things like what used to be called affirmative action or employment equity? Finding that balance of the best talent in the classroom to educate our children while also ensuring all of those tangible and intangible qualities that matter just as much in educating children are also reflected?
I think that those types of programs are so important in a First Nations school system. They are so important, I mean, for First Nations students in the provincial school system. And the reason I say that is because we are not set up. We don't often have, have the time to aspire to be teachers in a provincial system. There are very few of us in our communities who aspire to do, to work outside of our communities. So in order to meet that challenge, we need to create an opportunity within those organizations, within those schools, within those institutions. I think it's so important that we understand that we need to be intentional in our actions. And when I talk about intentionality, it's so important. But the intentionality that we need to be, that needs to be there for school boards, if you need, if you want diversity around your staff, you need to be intentional about it. You need to say, we need, if we want to have a 6% of our staff reflect the 6% of their First Nations students or the 30% or the 40%, we need to be intentional about that. And we need to say, we need to hire 14 First Nations teachers this year. We need to be very intentional. And we need to set out with that goal in mind. And our process has to, at the end of the day, our process has to deliver 14 First Nations students, if that's the intention. Otherwise, we're just spinning our heels and we're just going to create a situation where we're making excuses year after year after year about why First Nations are not participant in the school system, the public school system.
I think one of the things we have to realize is there's a lot of talented people out there who are interested in becoming teachers. And that, you know, the bars that we set need to be fair, but they need to be fair in a sense of equity also. And so, you know, I, I would never suggest that we open up the teaching profession to just anyone who feels like they want to do it. I think there is a minimum qualification that's required to come in. But outside of that, I think we have to really think differently around, you know, what constitutes our assessment of the best fit. You know, a lot of times, best fit has been used to exclude people. You know, we use somewhat narrow definitions of organizational culture and organizational fit to keep people out. And so I think that, you know, for trustees or senior leaders in school divisions to really spend some time unpacking what they mean by, you know, who's the most qualified, what's required to become the most qualified. Quite often in work that I do, I paraphrase a quote that was given by a former president of the United States, Lyndon Johnson, who talked about bringing two people to a race. And saying, you know, if we expect someone who's been shackled by chains for hundreds of years to be at the starting line with someone who's been given all the opportunity to train and eat well and perform well. And we, you know, fire the starter's gun and say, okay, race. And expect that the results will be anything other than what you can predetermine are foolish. And so, you know, the whole notion of, as you point out, employment equity, it's based on the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. It says that we have socio-historical groups in Canada who have been disadvantaged. And that point at which we will achieve justice for all will be achieved when we have shifted the balances, the scales of justice, to allow those who have been historically held back to have some level of advantage. And at some point, we'll bring this thing to rest. And at that point in time, we'll have a healthier society. So I think for trustees, it's a matter, and, and senior leaders, senior administrators, to take a look at, at how we do some of this measuring and assessing.
Try to make sure that the entire school system, the school board hopefully included, but the whole school system reflects the diversity of the community in some meaningful way. So that the teachers and administrators, all this going back to our word intentional, the word of the day, right? I mean, this is all about being very conscious and deliberate in making those decisions. I think it also is a matter of really setting as a priority for the district, as a strategic priority really, that this is the work of the public schools. This isn't some initiative that this superintendent or this board's leadership subscribes to. Because the, the problem with that, I think, is quite obvious, which is that when people leave, and they do ultimately, one way or the other, you want this to be an ongoing value, really, of the, a core value, really, of the school system.
And so you mentioned students. And if you could kind of go into that, that student level now a little bit, from all the hats that you've worn in, in serving young people in the system of education, both in their learning, but also, as you mentioned earlier, opportunities for within a school division perhaps, or as teachers, as a possible career future for them, from, from the different ages, all the way to the students in your, in your faculty. Like, what are some, some thoughts that you've had over the years and now that you might offer to the trustees on that matter?
Well, I'll share with the trustees a brief story. When I became a teacher and was toured through the school that I was going to begin my career in, I was introduced to a grade four class who were going to become my grade five class, and wonderful, wonderful young people. And the principal introduced me to the class that this is Mr. Cranston. And typical as kids, some are listening, some weren't. Conversation went for a couple of minutes. A young man, student put up his hand and asked the principal towards the end of the introduction if I was going to be the school's bus driver. Because for that young child, the only person of color he had encountered up to that point in time probably drove a bus. So the principal was somewhat embarrassed. But again, it's not a matter of me sloughing it off. Matter of fact, I knew that my work was in front of me. I knew that, that it was important work for these kids. I mean, they're literally children and they're asking a question really out of innocence and not knowing. But how important that becomes, you know, in this particular case, the student was white. So for this young man to learn that teachers actually come in a variety of colors and genders and sizes and shapes, you know, how important that is. And I think that speaks to what we need to do in the K-12 system with young people to open up their eyes to who could become teachers, right? Not just for students who are racialized, but for white students also to see the possibility of literally anyone can become a teacher, that this is a profession and a possibility for anyone. And I think that's one of the real benefits of diversity. I think sometimes we think of diversity and the benefits of targeted hiring, really benefiting those students who have been marginalized, left out, and don't see themselves represented. I think there's an equal benefit to the majority segment of society to be able to actually come to a deeper appreciation for the gifts that we all bring as possible teachers.
So keeping on that, and with your, your, your so important observation about the, the, the impact and power of history and across generations, maybe turning our attention a little bit to the students in terms of their own futures. And what role or ideas or advice would you have on, in the matter of educational leadership or divisional participation? Or just supporting students in their own future? Or just supporting students in their own future journeys possibly as growing adults in terms of increasing and diversifying equity and representation in school divisions?
Well, just like school boards that haven't traditionally been represented, we haven't seen ourselves reflected in school boards for, across, for a lot, through a historical lens. Children often go to school and they don't see themselves reflected in the corridors of that school. They don't see, they don't see First Nations teachers, they don't see First Nations principals, vice principals, they don't see custodians, they don't see support staff in those schools that look like them. And that's really important, that I think that schools are reflective of the community that they draw from. So for, in our case, in our community in Memberto, I've often said that First Nations students right across this country, for years and years, when a student graduated from high school, and it was such a, at one point, our success rates at high school graduation were abysmal. They were in the twenty, twenty-five percent. But before I came to work in my community, in the seven years preceding my position as a director of education here in my community, those seven years collectively, we had a twenty-six percent high school graduation rate. And so what we would often say in First Nations communities, when someone graduates, we think they're exceptional. Because they've gone through a system, and they oftentimes are. The ones that graduated in the, you know, in the sixty, seventies and eighties, they had to be exceptional in order to meet that minimum requirement for graduation. And so the challenge for school boards today is to be able to look in a mirror and save themselves. What can I, as a school board trustee? What can I, as a school board institution, do that allows students to meet those requirements for graduation? How can we create a playing field where First Nations students are no longer need to be exceptional to walk across that stage after thirteen years? I always say that the single biggest thing that we need to do is we need to create an educational system where a First Nations high school graduation graduate, a First Nations high school graduate, is not an exception. But in fact, is an expectation.
Yes. What kinds of things would you suggest or advise to those communities that are less diverse in their population makeup, but still value and wanna learn more and reflect more in their work, as well as possibly in their staffing makeup and in their leadership level? Exactly those same dimensions and qualities that you talked about from other communities where there's greater indigenous participation and membership in the community?
Well, my experience has been not just in Nova Scotia, but I've traveled across this entire country over the last twenty-five years in my role as director here. I have yet to see provincial school systems that are truly reflective of the community that they serve. You know, they can say, we don't have a large population. But when you go and you actually look at the numbers in those schools of First Nations employees, teachers, principals, vice principals, our school boards hire, and they work with and hire tens of thousands of teachers, tens of thousands of, tens of thousands of custodians. You know, most hundreds to thousands of administrative people. They have, you know, some of them have hundreds of people working in their central office. And if they have a community, they say, well, we only have a two percent of our community is First Nations, or ten percent. When you look in their school systems, they still do not reflect that. They do not even reflect the bare minimum. So I think that you probably need intentionality more so than the community where it's fifty percent First Nation, because it's so obvious. Like I said earlier, we're dealing with a history here, a history of non-inclusiveness. And in order for us to be inclusive, we need to get past that. We need to be willing to say, this is what the composition of this school from an equity perspective needs to look like. And then we need to be very intentional about how we go about making that happen. Not with the intent of displacing people, but when new hires happen and you have a disproportionate amount of your staff that are not reflective of your makeup of your community, or the makeup of the geography of your board, then you need to, at that point, be intentional in your hiring. You need to be intentional and self-reflective in the school system that they're attending.
Many more times than once, I had school leaders tell me that they really were working on, you know, English as a second language and other programs of support for immigrant students that they did not have to deal with before, in places that you might not have expected it. All of which speaks to the challenge we have, right? I mean, these are forces that are gonna continue and maybe even exponentially. And so we have to recognize that this isn't just something nice that we're doing to help those kids, because that's a really bad attitude to have about it, number one. But number two, it also kind of ignores the reality that the very nature of our society is changing and the public schools have to be meeting those needs where they are and anticipating where they're going to be. So it's a really serious, serious matter. It's not funny, I guess, but I think it's interesting, the reality of it, when you talk to leaders who can really think about how their communities have changed. You know, if you just say, well, think about this now, especially somebody who maybe lived in that area, grew up, went to school there. Think back to what it was twenty-five or thirty years ago and where you are now. And think about, you know, just everything that's changed, the businesses that have moved in, the new housing, all that stuff. Sometimes these changes are really dramatic and sometimes they're slow and they take place over time. But that's part of what I think school leaders have to do is to really be assessing how that's impacting on the delivery of the service.
You know, what are your hopes? What are your wishes? What's your advice, your parting thoughts and wisdom? You know, on this topic of representation for all those school board members as they continue their thinking and their action going into next year for their school divisions?
Well, my hopes are always that we form school boards across this country. And we give Aboriginal voice a place in every school board, that we have members that are knowledgeable and capable and willing to go into their communities, to listen to the people in those communities, and to bring their voice to a place where their voice has not been heard.
Public schools are usually typically one of the greatest assets in the community. People are proud of their schools, they see them as playing a central role in their community. And it's the school boards who have that leadership role to make sure there is that connection. But we've also learned, and I think the conversation we've been having, Rob, really underscores this, that community ownership is not a given, right? I mean, it's not. And there can be significant elements of the community that can feel disenfranchised. You might be serving them because they're welcome into your school. But they don't necessarily feel like they're owning the schools. They may feel actually like they're being pushed away, maybe unintentionally. And so the strength of the public schools, in my view, is that it is, they are seen as assets of the community. The boards are the trustees of that asset. And it's their job to make sure that there are connections to all elements of the community. So they feel like that's their institution, that's their school that is serving their kids.
Sure. Well, you know, I'm a huge supporter of the work that locally elected school trustees, board members do. Because I think it's one of the messages of what we had always hoped for in terms of local governance. I think that, you know, even with the series of amalgamations that we've seen in Manitoba and Saskatchewan, it's still, in some ways, the closest form of local democracy we have. And I'm optimistic, I'm optimistic from my experience of, you know, being a partner to one, been working with a number of trustees, the trustees do understand that. I think that, you know, we're being challenged right now, not just during this pandemic, but through the pandemic, with many of the cracks that exist in our social network and our social system. And I think education is one of the places where we can make a profound difference. And it isn't to sugarcoat or gloss over the challenges that exist in terms of budget and in terms of, you know, limited resources. But it's one of the few places where people still place a lot of trust and hope. And I remain optimistic. I often say that this enterprise that we've gotten ourselves into education, it's premised on hope. It's premised on optimism, it's premised on trust. And I think the people in the system, teachers, administrators, senior administrators, trustees, they take that seriously. And I think we've got the right people, you know, in the general sense, we've got the right people. Because this is not a profession where the rewards necessarily come in the form of hard, tangible dollars and cents and those sorts of things. It's an opportunity to make a profound difference in society. And I remain optimistic that educators across the spectrum will respond.
All been gold and wisdom that you shared. Thank you so much again.
I thank you.
Thank you.
MacGill, messy, messy. Thanks, Rob, I appreciate it.
Take care.
Great conversation, great talking with you.
I'm sure you will have found that session very beneficial. We were deliberate in choosing the State of Equity in Education report for today's PD session because we know that there was plenty of valuable material and learnings for all trustees and boards across the province. We will ensure that the full content, because of course, in order to keep the session to about an hour, we weren't able to provide all of the full interviews with the guests. But we will definitely provide the full content online and will share those links out to member boards in the coming days and weeks. So thank you very much for attending today's PD session.